Okay, Mayor's coming right back. Call this meeting of the City of Prattville Planning Commission to order. Ms. Morgan, roll call please.
Mayor Gillespie, Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Chairman Gar- Bowles. Chairman Gardner, Vice Chair McAlley.
Here.
Chief Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Carpenter.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
And Mr. Smith.
All right, we've got five at the moment. We'll need six for preliminary plat when we get there. But the mayor is coming back, I believe. Minutes from March 21st, 2013. Been reviewed.
I move that they be accepted as may.
Okay. Okay, I need a second.
One second.
Motion by Ms. Carpenter, a second by Mr. Nelson. All in favor of approving the minutes of March 21st, 2013 as issued, indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. There is no old business. I would like for us to consider rearranging the agenda. Like to put item number two, which is Glenbrook subdivision, Platts three and six, down as number six. And then Glenbrook subdivision, Platt two D, final plat, which is now number six, to put that to number seven. These are going to take considerable discussion, I think, and I think we can get the others out of the way fairly well, so.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Hall to rearrange the agenda as just stated.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any discussion, concerns? All in favor of rearranging the agenda as stated, please indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries. With that, the first item of business is replat Cobb Ford Village, Platt one, Cobb Ford Road, and Cobb Boulevard, owner Prattville Property Investments, LLC, engineer representative, Pilgrim Engineer. Mr. Pilgrim, please, sir. This is number one. Yes, sir, would you tell us what you've got, please, sir?
We've got two lots on Cobb Ford Road, and we want to replat it into one lot, the existing platted lots, just plating it into one lot for development.
These two lots are the lots next door to Hampton Inn?
Yes.
Between Hampton Inn and...
And Service Station.
Right, Service Station. Okay. Any questions from Mr. Pilgrim while you're going? Okay, this has been a simple replat. I need a motion to replat the Cobb Ford Village Platt one as proposed.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Nelson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor of the proposed replat, please indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Pilgrim. Item number two is preliminary plat Deerwood Estates, Platt seven, Cook Road, owner Joel Chance, engineer representative Jeff Coe, Engineering and Surveyors, LLC. This is a preliminary plat and requires a public hearing. Mr. Duke, would you tell us what this is briefly before we ask for comments?
Yes, sir, this is the previously unplatted 1.92 acre remnant of the Deerwood Estates subdivision. This is a parcel that exists there on Cook Road, the southern end of Cook Road, adjacent to the Hearthstone subdivision and the remainder of Deerwood. The applicant is, as we have asked them to do plating this so that we pick up required right-of-way and easements and do this in a proper manner. We are recommending approval of this plat.
Okay. All right, Mr. Chance, any comments? Okay. 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 All right, this is a public hearing related to the preliminary plat for this. Any questions or comments from the public? Yes, ma'am. Could you please come sign in and identify yourself? Thank you. Yeah, we do have some feedback of some sorts. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Pat Cook, and I live on Cook Road. And I think I understood what he was saying. I'm thinking, and I was like, clarity, is he talking about that parcel land that they just cleared off on Cook Road? Is that the land they're referring to?
In the corner, yes, in that corner there.
So it won't have anything to do with, I just got noticed because it connects onto mine, that's the only reason?
Yep, yes, ma'am.
That's all I needed.
Okay. You see, here's the picture. Cook Road winds on down around here, and this is Deerwood Estates, and it's that big lot in the corner. Good deal. Thank you for coming today. Thank you. Any other comments in the public hearing?
I need just a little more information on the lot having its left cleared, and it's beautiful, gently floating toward the street, and you have a nice street in there without right-of-way, and he's accommodating the city by donating that. That's really got less acreage than he thinks he had. And plus an easement for the Sanitar Sewer adequately on there. Utilities are in his sights, so it's ideal for him and for the city. Thank you.
Other comments will close the public hearing. Let's get the resolution read into, let's see, this is number three. Mr. Nelson, could you read that in for us, number behind number three? Thank you.
Number three, all right, resolution preliminary plat Deerwood Estates, Platt seven, April 18th, 2013. Where Joel and Rebecca Chance are the owners of Deerwood Estates, Platt seven, and where the proposed development is located inside the city limits on Cook Road, and whereas a public hearing for the proposed development was heard on April 18th, 2013, and whereas the city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted preliminary plat of Deerwood Estates, Platt number seven. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Mr. Nelson to approve the proposed preliminary plat?
It's Rachel Chance.
Okay. Rebecca, all right, we'll get the right words in there. Thank you. I hadn't looked at it, or I would have called it. Okay, we'll get the right words in there. Okay, do we have a second to Mr. Nelson's motion?
Second.
Second by Mayor Gillespie. Any discussion? All in favor of the proposed preliminary plat, please indicate your approval by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item number four is final plat Deerwood Estates, Platt seven, Cook Road, owner Joel Chance, engineer representative Jeff Coe, Engineering and Surveyors, LLC. This is a final plat of what we just approved the preliminary on, being single lot. We will change the name to Joel and Rachel Chance. Get that right?
Is it? Rachel and Rebecca.
Rachel is the correct name, yes. Okay. Chief, could you read that in the record for us, please, sir?
Resolution final plat Deerwood Estates, Platt seven, April 18th, 2013. Whereas Joel and Rachel Chance are the owners of Deerwood Estates, Platt seven, and whereas the proposed development is located inside the city limits on Cook Road, and whereas a preliminary plat for the proposed development was approved on April 18th, 2013, and whereas the city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of the submitted final plat of Deerwood Estates, Platt seven. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Chief Johnson, second by Ms. Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor of this final plat, please indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. These folks are going to be my neighbors, and I am thankful for something to be built on that lot. Thank you. Item number four, as listed five on your agenda, replat Avalon Place, Platt seven, Avalon Drive, owner Avalon Properties, Claude Walker, engineer representative Jeff Coe, Engineering and Surveyors. Mr. Jeff Coe, what you got, please, sir?
This is, when this 50 or 60 acres was bought by Avalon several years ago to develop on the other side of the ditch, it left in this particular area one lot that was acre and two-thirds isolated by itself at the end of the road. And we just, it doesn't look like it's going to be in the subdividing anytime soon, so they're trying to get a little cash back by selling that vacant lot. Yes, sir. And it's, you know, it's some 400 and something feet long down to the ditch, and only about 140, 46 feet wide, so I'm sorry the printers didn't get a full-size copy for the meeting, but if any of you haven't got something over there, it's the same as you got, so. The only thing challenging the city is making sure that we satisfy the city on the turnaround and the work that already has, and we'll continue to work closely with Joel and the fire department and so forth to make sure we can get every bit of the turnaround at the very end there for emergency vehicles.
Okay. Mr. Duke, I believe the city had some comments, please, sir?
Yes, sir, this replat is there at the end of Ridgewood Road, and it is on an unpaved section of that platted right-of-way from the 1950s. These are remnants, or pieces of a couple of the original lots, and therefore we're requiring the replat. We had asked Mr. Jeff Coe to look closely at extending the pavement at the width that it exists on Ridgewood down to this lot, and I think you have a drawing that was submitted yesterday that shows roughly what we were after. We were looking more for an exact alignment with the driveway across from it, but if Mr. Jeff Coe is willing to work on that, we can get that worked out separate from the planning commission if everybody is in agreement. But that has to be worked out with the city between the fire marshal and the planning department to get something that functions as an adequate turnaround. And you'll understand that if you look at the location map, this is a little far south of that intersection with Avalon that we would like to have an adequate turnaround. And a T-shaped turnaround is sufficient, but it's something we need to line up with each other across from the driveways.
Okay, y'all can work that out, we don't need them in to splat?
Well, if you're asking us to work that out, I wish you'd make it as a part of your motion so that it's clear. Mr. Jeff Coe seems amenable to that, and I'm sure we can find some solution.
Okay, thank you. What I understood from all that is that we need a motion to approve this replat of Avalon Place, Platt seven, with the stipulation that the turnaround be resolved between the owner, engineer, and city planning and engineering. That's correct? Okay. Motion by Ms. Carpenter for that proposed replat. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Hall.
Mr. Joel, Mr. Duke, question? Is that up in Matt Gray Park, that area there, Ridgewood, what is Ridge what?
It's actually the opposite side of the Pine Creek tributary that runs through there. If you were to continue down the road next to Matt Gray Park, it eventually kind of deadends. And if you recall, several years ago, we had, in fact, a plat that Mr. Jeff Coe represented that would have extended a road through there.
That's where the big house is, in there.
Yes, sir. There's actually a platted right-of-way that turns to the north at that point and crosses that tributary, and you're seeing the opposite side of the bank here. This is the north side of the bank of the tributary, and both sides of the tributary are named Ridgewood Road based on the plat from the 1950s, and there's no bridge there.
That's what I know, a friend of mine got stuck down there with time in Matt Gray.
Okay.
Thank you, Joel.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Any other discussion? All in favor of the proposed replat with the stipulation that turnaround agreement being worked out, please indicate your approval by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Jeff Coe. Item number five, which is number seven on your list, is a replat Whittington Platt one, 724 Elizabeth Street, owner Rebecca and Donald Whittington, engineer representatives Donald and Rebecca Whittington. Mr. Whittington, could you tell us what you have, please, sir?
I am asking for about a one-acre parcel of property directly behind Lot three to be added together to become one property. It is for a couple of different reasons. One reason is when we move into the house at 724 Elizabeth Street, we are going to ask for a homestead for Lot three and that triangular-shaped piece of property, and also it gives me a little bit of room for some expansion to be able to build an accessory building. But that's basically what we're asking for today.
You live at 724?
I do not, not now. It's a vacant house. I own the house.
You own that house, okay.
I live up on Upper Kingston right now, but I plan on moving into 724.
Okay, good deal. All right, yeah, any questions from Mr. Whittington? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duke, comments from the city, please, sir?
Yes, sir, we'd recommend approval based on Mr. Whittington's wishes. We have reviewed for Mr. Whittington that this does restrict this piece of property by binding it to the existing lot. But other than that, cautionary note, which Mr. Whittington has indicated he understands, we have no other comment, we recommend approval.
Thank you. I need, this is a simple replat, and I need a motion that we replat Whittington Platt one as proposed.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
So moved by Mr. Nelson, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. Any discussion amongst the commission? Very good. All in favor of the proposed replat, please indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Whittington. Item number six, which shows up as number two on the agenda, this is sketch plan Glenbrook subdivision, Platts three and six, Old Ridge Road, owner Stone Martin Builders, engineer representative Barrett Simpson, Inc., represented by Mr. Blake Rice. Mr. Rice, you want to tell us what you've got? Yeah, I guess we could read it in, couldn't we? Yeah, come on up, Mr. Rice. While you're doing that, we'll read it into the record. Mr. Hall, could you read in the record number two, please, sir?
Resolution sketch plan Glenbrook subdivision phase three dash six, April 18th, 2013. Where Stone Martin Builders is developer of Glenbrook subdivision phase three and six, and whereas the proposed development is located outside the city limits at the south side of Old Ridge Road, west of existing Glenbrook subdivision, Platt one and two, where the city department heads have reviewed and commented on the proposed development. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Prattville Planning Commission hereby gives its favorable review of submitted sketch plan Glenbrook subdivision phase three dash six. Mr. Chairman, move the docs readily.
Okay, resolutions for sketch plan Glenbrook, oh, come on, Roy, Glenbrook subdivision phases three and six, proposed to approve by Mr. Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. All right, we are ready for a discussion, so, Mr. Rice, what you've got?
Turn the mic. Sir? Turn the mic. Well, I am going to attempt, I think we're all used to me getting up here and taking up entirely too much of y'all's time, being, for lack of a better word, long-winded.
Just give us 20 acres on the park, and we'll quit talking.
This is the Glenbrook master plan, and it pretty much speaks for itself. It's a grand total of just over 1,100 proposed lots. Obviously, this is 100% master plan, and it takes some years to achieve this plan to completion. It does have a connection to the existing Glenbrook subdivision right here, along with a possible realignment of Old Ridge Road, shown in this, at this point right there, separated into different phases, which show the different types of lots, three main lot styles, the same three that y'all are currently used to seeing in the existing Glenbrook subdivision. A fair, if not inordinate, amount of green space throughout the development, as well as the location of some possible detention facilities through that green space. Other than that, I would prefer to hear discussion and questions from the commission.
All right, show me the connections with what's there and what's going to be there. You mentioned some of them, but, okay.
This is the connection to the existing Glenbrook subdivision. On the northern end, there are two proposed connections.
I'm sorry.
Apologize for that.
That's all right, take your time. Just take your time, you're all right. I was going to say.
There is, this is Glenbrook Boulevard, as it comes in from Old Ridge Road, and it continues on throughout the development, and we, in discussions with staff, we did attempt to not make a thoroughfare out of Glenbrook Boulevard, and attempted to keep it from being a direct route all the way up to Old Ridge Road, and keep it from being its own shortcut. And, you know, you kind of have to meander through this subdivision with the hopes that at some point anybody coming down Old Ridge Road would not ever choose to utilize Glenbrook subdivision as a detour in and of itself, they would choose to just continue along Old Ridge Road. There's another connection to Glenbrook, to the existing subdivision. At this point, these roads are stubbed out for these connections, and this road continues on through a section of lots and crosses the main drainage channel in this area, and continues on around, hits Old Ridge Road again on the proposed Old Ridge Road realignment. Again, at this point, there is also, staff has expressed desire to have a possibility of a secondary, another access to the south. I do believe that, you know, it's a possibility, albeit a slim one, that, you know, any time in the near future, this connection could be utilized, but we did go ahead and stub it out at this point, understanding that at some point the city could possibly, either publicly or privately, bring an additional roadway through here and create additional traffic circulation.
And that's to the west of current River Chase North?
It is.
Okay.
That does, staff, in staff's comments, they did question a stub out to River Chase North. All I can say about that is Stone Martin would be happy to connect to River Chase North.
If they can, I agree.
We have attempted numerous discussions, and I think staff has been involved, and a good many of these discussions have attempted to come up with different manners to connect to River Chase North, and the adjacent developers have really not been amenable to many of those ideas. We do stub out to it at this point, and could easily stub out again there. It really would not be a problem, not something that Stone Martin would be against by any means, if that, you know, during the course of this, that's asked for, you know, be happy to stub that out. It's just at this point, the River Chase North developers and my clients have not been able to come to a solution about that, because we have really, as y'all know, we really were wanting a secondary connection to Glenbrook, because it's hampering our further expansion of the development. So we've done everything in our power to foster that and have not been successful as of yet. This is the Pendlebrook subdivision, the, these are dashed because they are a old, actually not even a sketch plan, it's an approved preliminary plat that came to y'all two and a half, three years ago, something like that. That property since went into bankruptcy and was unavailable, and it, that approved preliminary plat, but obviously, in the future, it could possibly adjust that. And here is necessary. Staff has also, which we have added at this point, it's directly in our roadways, it's actually a very viable connection. I really, we have looked at the topography along this viable connection should this property over here ever develop. I were on that theme, I think one of Chief Johnson's main concerns, as well as point, we have since, it was your comment that asked for Glenbrook Boulevard to extend out, I did not think it would be too much of a problem. It's like 680 feet, something like that. It's much less than 1,000. I didn't continue on per your comment, and it would require additional mitigation and stream impacts, so we just moved it right up the draw and as a connection at that point. The other major, currently, and I do have revised, no, it's, yesterday, it was like staff. Yes. Is that your same thing? Yes. The other, imagine what everybody really wants to know about is realignment, we've shown it in, obviously, a development could not just realign Old Ridge Road all at once. We have intended to, as well as the park has been modified. And I would imagine Joel may want to expound upon staff's comments, he and I have not had a chance to discuss since this was submitted, so I would imagine, eyes apart. As far as... As a timeline? Okay. First phase to come through, and this comes out of, some months ago, with planning staff and fire staff and engineering staff, was, right here. At this point, one additional phase. After that phase is completed, consisting of 100 lots, it was determined that any additional lots that were to be constructed in Glenbrook subdivision have a secondary act. access. And Chief Johnson... Care of the data I'm giving you right now. Of the realignment would connect the second. So, once we hit one hundred and one lots, we are tied to this point. Obviously, you know, it's very preliminary sketch plan, but this is shown as ninety-seven We then moved through... C. This was three A, three B, three C. Kinda, you know, you can't imagine if you average, which I think Stone Martin in this market has been averaging somewhere around a hundred lots a year. Those maybe a few less. So you're, you're talking one year... Pendlebrook may be developing. So at that point, how do you make the connection? You know? And at the same time, we would obviously try to connect in as quickly as we could, very much in our best interest to get a secondary connection in here. Through E, at this point, being a hundred and eleven lots and it... More than half of Old Ridge Road is constructed. First section of Phase Four. Phase Four is shown at five lots. So it would get to here. Four would continue to be developed. And at this point, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm kinda getting out there so far out in years, I, I'm, I'm kinda posturing out there a little bit. Vision it starting. If we come forward, lots now, we're expecting to come forward next year with another approximately hundred lots that would begin the realignment of Old Ridge. R three and R five. It is, I don't know, seventy-five, eighty percent R three with the R five being garden homes right there. Phase two was also done the same manner with... Actually zoned R five, but those garden homes were, once it went into actual... Standard single-family housing was put in, so it actually meets the R zoning definition. I actually have not looked at this in some time, but... For large lots in today's standards, I, they may actually meet some... R three. They're... They meet R two. We've, they have expanded as we've developed, you know, it's a little bit of a moving target trying to figure out what your buyers are actually looking for on the, the best size of the lot. So, but that's what we had envisioned. R three, except for this one dark area. Will you forgive me if I'm giving previously understood information? But when you develop a single-family residential subdivision like this, it usually... All are in the middle and if you're gonna do any type of zero lot line... It's increasingly getting smaller as you, as you move towards the center of the development. Parts of that each time. Single-family two, and then the majority of it is larger, you know, for lack of a better word, what we term the estate lots. But what we're showing, well, I don't believe... Okay. So if, if there are no intentions to have any apartments, obviously it's a conditional If apartments were ever even thought of, y'all, it would have to come back before this The medium, the small, some small commercial areas... Those that you start developing like this, it was sometime before commercial was ever utilized, if, if at all. It, it's very feasible, you get into a situation like this. Obviously, out Glenbrook, nobody's gonna build a high-end gas station out on Old Ridge Road at this point. So if Glenbrook progresses nicely and moves forward at some point in the future, some type to be there or a small, you know, retail shopping center, you know, in the neighborhood of one of the little four-unit, you know, subway and stuff like that. But that is... Here, we, we envision no apartments whatsoever. The most aggressive home would be the small garden homes that are shown, that are out there today. This, this is actually, this is actually a Stone Martin development. Stone Martin is not in the business of developing property and selling. They are in the business of developing for themselves to build homes. That is not in the plans at all.
Tell us about the green space.
One comment on the... Of ownership of the green space. And I, I think that is up for discussion. I don't, you know, I don't know whether the city is, you know, wanting to take green space. I, I will tell y'all this. When I first opened up here, I had never seen a municipality take ownership of the, of the detention facilities. That's new for me. Never seen that before. So I, I don't know, I don't know if y'all are wanting to take ownership of these facilities, but it is definitely not a necessity. To, to connect to sewer on this development. Options, and I don't even know that I've told Joel this. Our original plan was... Regional lift station for sewage, somewhere along this... Property to the south. We have since done... Having a trunk line up from the south. Development. And in that situation, you're gonna be down in those bottoms, running sewer and it would, it's really a good opportunity for Stone Martin to get in there and create some walking trails throughout this, this wooded, these wooded areas and in these... I would have never believed it, but this right here, I don't know if anybody's ever actually been to that point on this property, but it is actually a really beautiful creek. These two, these two creeks come... A substantial stream through there and they would really like to, you know, take advantage of that and create some, you know, some passive recreational area in there.
How close are you to Pine Creek, Ben?
I'm not exactly... Yes, sir. Well, not currently. Everything I understood, and I, I must admit, I'm, I'm a little hazy on the exact details of, of this park. Our intention and our understanding was... Purchases a sizable amount of acreage from the current landowner and turns around and deeds it to the city for open space. It's, from what I understand, it's, it's a, it's an open field for people to utilize in the city they wish in the future. It actually, it's kinda, it's kinda painful, but this is highly developable property. It's, it's very good, open pasture at this point.
Let me take a few minutes to, to not really dispute what Mr. Rice is saying. That's not the, the point here. I think we have an opportunity to discuss quite a bit about this, this development. This is a tremendous amount. The amount, the number of lots listed in the staff report covered that which they had already segmented into lots and we had asked Mr. Rice to kinda provide an overall, and that's where the eleven hundred seven lots comes from. So that includes both south of the realigned Old Ridge Road and north, all six phases.
We appreciate that we have our...
We do, yes. Just the things that really are positive here. First of all, I'd, I'd like to thank Blake for coming down and, and meeting with us extensively in discussing this piece of property. We've been having on again, off again conversations for about a year, understanding that they, they had an opportunity to develop this property. And the, the latter phases of the existing Glenbrook were really set up with that in mind. The continuation of connecting streets, picking up streets that are just in the sketch plan of, of Pendlebrook and making these connections are all very much in line with what you've asked for in the past and, and continued connectivity that we would like to see. The adjustments that he's made to the west and the south are certainly welcome. The one to the south will be somewhat difficult, but I believe is, is definitely there. It's lines up with Jasmine Trail where it dead ends into fourteen at this point. There, there would be the necessity of crossing what has been laid out on a sketch plan of River Chase North and then making that final connection to Jasmine Trail. But it, it's definitely needed in this to continue that north-south route. Respecting the green space is not something we see that often and definitely is to their advantage as much as it is to ours, being the folks that'll have to accept the subdivision at some point in the future. Those tributaries, Mr. Nelson, of Pine Creek are, are very deep and very erosive and if you look at the, if you look at the location map, you can see that they, those deep ravines correspond where they did, are not plowing the fields. And sometimes the farmers know best. So they haven't messed with it over the years and it's probably best to leave it that way. But that does provide really good opportunities to the developer to, to develop them for green space. And I think at this point, the discussion about who owns that or who has access to it is, is probably one of those that can be carried on down the road.
What, what have we done in other situations?
We, we've done it both ways. I think frankly that it's, it's probably more than the city would like to, to take, but it's something that we would entertain. At a minimum, we probably wanna look at some kind of pathway through there. Pine Creek, as, as we've discussed many, many times, provides some really good opportunities, especially as we head north here into this undeveloped part of it, for linear walking, linear trails, linear park-type system. And this is also somewhat of a floodplain. Well, it is a floodplain and it's not gonna be really usable for much other than recreation. So, you know, those opportunities are there. If we find a location for a park, connecting that up with a linear system is even better situation. I wanna talk a little bit before I get back to the municipal park about the realigned Old Ridge Road. That came about from discussions about connectivity and a statement of the obvious. First sketch that Blake and company brought up to us showed a nice connection to this point, Old Ridge Road. Use the larger map. Showed a great connection right here. And all you had to do was take you right through to here, Old Ridge Road. Connectivity has been both a, a really positive for the city, but it also creates some negatives in that it, it creates at times traffic that some of the residents were not expecting. And given the, the additional, almost a mile that they would have to go up Old Ridge Road to come back around and come by East, excuse me, East Memorial Baptist Church, we figured that this would be a shortcut used more often than most. If you're familiar with Fernway and, and Montgomery, it takes off between Bond Road and, and McGee. That is a, a great example of an unintended consequence of good connectivity and that's what we're trying to avoid here. We also know that as, as this area develops, not just this acreage here, but others, that Old Ridge Road will become very much like Old Farm Lane has become. It's a, it's a old agricultural access road or a very rural road that has grown up and, as far as traffic's concerned. And so any opportunity we have to, to fix that, which was, is what this would do, is provide a nice higher-capacity street, take care of the alignment, improve the route, then, then we're looking for that. And we appreciate their helping us with that and we, we'll have to have some discussions down the road about how that's, how that's funded, both either, both by the, the city possibly or, and the developer. Back to the municipal park, as we know from experience, looking at the park on Jasmine Trail and East Poplar, the better location is the location that, that has frontage on the ma, on the road. on the ma, on the road. You want to be near a main road. You want to have good frontage along the road so that your opposite houses, you're looking at their front yards. That's eyes on the park all the time, cuts down on vandalism and it creates a space that is really thought of as being public. Location, as far as I'm concerned, it is, is certainly important, but design aspects of it are probably more important and making sure that we're not creating a space that is perceived to be only for the folks in this neighborhood, a space that's perceived to be somewhat unwelcoming. So even, even the one in the redesign places it behind lots. It places it kind of between the, the East Memorial Church property and, and these lots. We, we need to look at a, a design that, that provides good access. Also need to keep in mind that we're, we're looking at about three thousand, by my rough estimate, residents that will be within about a mile of this, this park. If you just come to the center of this development and start radiating out, counting existing Glenbrook, River Chase North, potential Pendlebrook, even as far over as Hollybrook and then that's really not counting what might actually develop even further to the west, you're looking at a, a large area that needs to be served by a, a fairly substantial park. Now, the way we've handled that in the past is we have kind of reserved those spaces and then, you know, worked out as best we can with the developer about how that's developed and possibly acquired. The city does not have a formal mechanism for acquiring the dedication of a park. It doesn't have a formal mechanism for setting up the purchase. Generally, these have been negotiated situations, but it, it is incumbent upon the planning commission to consider where these parks need to be and try their best to reserve them. If, if something can be worked out, then developers is well within his rights and ability to come back and ask you to, to remove it. But it is important at this point, this very high level look at this larger piece of develop, piece of property to, to figure out where the parks should be and then try to work towards that goal. So that's what we're asking for. Certainly understand Mr. Rice's concerns and those of his client, that, that that is valuable land. It is, is certainly valuable for, for all parties. It's valuable for their development, but green space, public green space that is usable for recreation is, is very important. If you look at Pratt Park, just on a typical weekend, you'll start to understand that those are the size parks that we need to kind of accommodate our growing population. Well, it depends on where you stop that, that line. If you go past the stadium, which includes all that, we're looking at about, I'm sorry, I don't know, I'll tell you about fifteen acres. If you just include the pond, the recreation area, the pool. Those types of parks are needed. If you look at our comprehensive plan, you'll see that we're looking at park space kind of being located in areas where you don't have to cross a major road to get to it. The idea is that that is convenient to, to all users, young and old, in the in-between, so that you don't have to have a car necessarily to get there.
Yes, sir.
We don't want to know the copper street.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nelson, I'll tell you that just by a rough count, I've got, I got four routes just to the, the east alone of this that connect to existing subdivisions. You have three, three good connections back to this realigned Old Ridge Road and you have connections now with this sketch plan, both to the, to the west and to the south. Now, the one to the south, I would sure like to have more, but the topography really limits that and, and trying to find a really, the, the exact perfect location is important to keep the cost of that, both in, in construction and maintenance, keep that somewhat reasonable.
Yeah, we should have a way to go another route back to.
Yes, sir.
Sir, I, I think over time, we're going to find that this is a fairly good layout, just like we found with, with Jasmine Trail and, and the, and East Poplar. So be glad to answer any other questions at this point, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions from the commission? And I guess, you know, the, the concern I hear is the layouts as a whole is great. Yeah, we tickle to death, we get to see it. Certainly the realignment of all these roads is neat and connections all work. I think the, the green space deal is great too and the, the idea of the whole park and how we get from, to what we want from what he's got on the sketch plan is a part of it to me. Is that right? Am I interpreting what I've heard correctly?
The, the park is a, a bit of an issue from a staff perspective. I think we've pretty much resolved everything else and, and the location of the park, we're fairly flexible on that. The design, as far as, needs to be on one of the main, major routes within the development. It needs to have good access and good frontage. Those are the, the real concerns that we have, but.
We can move it over a, a block lot, a block, I mean a lot, and put the street on the other side. It cost him a street. So maybe you want to buy a street.
Mr. Chair, I also need to point out, and I apologize, that we need to talk a little bit about sewer capacity in this case and I don't think it will be an issue. You just need to be aware as a commission, y'all are charged with looking at longer term perspective and it's something the city is aware of. This entire basin was kind of laid out back in two thousand and three and studied. All of this flow goes to the, the city's Pine Creek wastewater treatment plant. At some point in, in this development or another, depending on who takes up capacity the most, there's going to be some design issues with the existing trunk system. So the city's wastewater department is aware of that. They're working hard to address that, but that's something you need to be aware of and certainly the developer does, but we don't anticipate an issue. We anticipate trying to upgrade the system as this comes along. That, of course, that's one of the places we're phasing is really important to understand is how fast will this come in, in to be.
Yes, Chief.
He's addressed a lot of the stuff that we had written up, but we collectively hadn't had a chance to look at the changes. Is, am I correct or did I just miss that meeting?
The staff has not looked at the, these changes. This, this was just provided to us yesterday, but you know, there's, that's something we can take a hard look at collectively.
Okay, Mr. Nelson?
Joel, one other thing. What is the situation of bringing this into the city limits?
Yes, sir. The, the city council has kind of continued informally a moratorium until they can get some, a better handle on, on what's going on in the outer black areas. We are working on a somewhat of a, of study to show them what's kind of the best area for annexation, what to expect in different areas and they've asked that we complete that by June and so we're trying to complete that.
Are Pendlebrook and Glenbrook in the city limits now?
Okay, Glenbrook Phase One is in the city limits.
Okay.
All of Pendlebrook is in the city limits.
Okay.
But Glenbrook Phase Two and certainly all of this property are, are out.
Okay.
I say that, actually, there is a small. A small piece of this opportunity that, that is based on a previous application by the Avant family. So the, the very northern part of that in Phase Six is in the city, but the vast majority of this is not.
Okay. All right. Seems to me like that maybe it's, since y'all hadn't, had a little time to see it and this is sketch plan and we, yeah, can we, can we hold on to it for a time? You can live with that? Okay, please.
Few items. As far as, you know, possibly tabling this, I, you know, tabling of this specific item here is not too much of an issue for Stone Martin. If the tabling of this item precludes approval of the, of the next, it, it's a, it's a little different story. And at the same time, I did want to respond to some of what, what Joel discussed. First of all, and I, I apologize that you're, that y'all have not had a chance to adequately review this. We did not receive comments on this until Friday. So it takes some time to, to do this work. So we, we, we got involved in this as quickly as possible and got it back as, as, as fast as we could. As far as, from, from what I can tell, I, and Joel and I have discussed this and I think that we are pretty much in agreement with the majority of this master plan with the exception of the park. And I know we can't fully solve that here today one hundred percent, but I would like to, to just give the commission a, a little bit of information about that. There, there were a few items that Joel discussed that, that kind of, you know, I, I wanted to respond to and one was the, the statement that, you know, we, we are trying to, to develop a park that one might not necessarily need a car to, to drive to. You know, at, at the same time, we're, we're, Stone Martin is looking to, to donate the city a, a valuable piece of property in the middle of what will essentially be almost fifteen hundred lots. I, I have a hard time believing anybody that doesn't live in this subdivision is going to walk to this park. That just, it, it, that's a fair piece. This is, this is two and a half miles, just that, just that realignment. You know, it, it, it is a, a, a city park by, by thought process, but, and you know, if, if any other developments happen very, you know, very close proximity to this, yeah, I mean, they would, but this is, you know, by and large, people are going to have to drive to this park unless they live in this subdivision.
Can I, can I ask a question? I think this is a, a Joel question rather than that. In terms of parks, what is the city likely to do with? I mean, you've got all sorts of walking space and so forth. What, what is the city likely to do with a park like this?
Good example is, is something like Pratt Park, like Overlook Park or the park in Jasmine Trail. It's designed to be a, a public gathering space. Could be some recreational uses. Mostly it's a, a public mall, if you want to think of it in that fashion. I, I guess I'll, and I'm not trying to get ahead of Blake here, but I would say that at this point, if we could find a location, there might be some way to talk about, you know, how do you make that park bigger and, and negotiate that in some fashion? There's, there are several opportunities. We just need to kind of find a location that everybody gets somewhat happy with and then we can, it's expected that, that the city would have to discuss that further. Now, certainly I like the idea of a donation, but I, rarely do we, we get all the park that we want through a donation, so.
Once again, I, I do go back to a hundred and nine acres of green space.
Yes, and I'll go back to, how many, how many of that is buildable and say, it's all right?
Some, some of.
I know. You're doing good, no, it's, it's good.
At the same time, you know, we, we have, I, I did take Joel's thought process to heart and, you know, that, that part was interior to this development. So I said, you know, good connectivity to the surrounding community, let's get it right up there on Old Ridge Road. I don't, I don't know that it gets any, any better accessible than putting it out on the main road that we're realigning. It's, you know, really as far as the size of it. Possibly could be moved to more adjacent to some of this green space and, you know, if, if the city would like, you know, some acreage of highly developable property and then a hundred acres of green space, sure, we'd be glad to give it to you, I'm sure. But it's sitting out there and the, my client has. Financial standpoint, which I know that is not really y'all's end of it, but from a financial standpoint, this is a major. It's, it's monstrous. Now, I, I know that there may be some, at some point down the line, some discussions with the city as possible city involvement, but that is, you know, we can't even think about that too much right now. That's a, that's a good ways away, I would imagine, Mayor. But, you know, th, this is a. Eight acres is shown. Just a little thought process about that. A football field is less than one acre. This is nine football fields of developable property. Yes, sir.
Football field is less than one acre?
Yes, sir. Forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty is one acre. Yes, sir. One football field is three hundred feet by one hundred and twenty.
Okay.
Yep, okay. That's right. We can probably get over the acres number where it is, is probably more of an issue. And I guess that raises a question of the, the final plat thing. Can we get past that and let him go?
The final plat question was whether or not we were able to kind of work out a, a location for the park and the, the dimensions of the park, but it sounds to me like they're certainly willing to, to find an appropriate location for the park. So that was the only caveat. That's why y'all left it out at the last plat and this, I'll let Mr. Rice explain why they're having to ask for, for this one lot plat, so.
Okay. So we, we think we can, you think you're, we think we're okay with allowing that final plat to go forward?
Yes, sir. From a, from a, this staff member's perspective, I would say that we're in good shape.
Okay. Okay, so then, given that, we can hold the sketch plan and resolve, work on the park thing?
Yes, sir. I, I would recommend that if you're, if you have questions about the sketch plan, you would consider holding that. I would also request that you might consider appointing a committee of the commission to, to work on that. Now, I'm speaking from the city's perspective. I'm not sure Mr. Rice would agree with that, but.
I think I just heard him say if we would resolve the final plat, he'd be all right if we held the sketch plan.
Make no mistake, we, we're not trying to shove this down the ass throat. We understand this is a major undertaking and, you know, the, the acreage is, is important. It's very valuable property. The location is much more manageable. Stone Martin can work with the location. You know, there are, there really are a lot of options on the location. That's, that's not something that I think is, you know, unmountable. But... I have a question from the outside. Is that a committee that will be... Final plat, Glenbrook subdivision plat two D, April eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Whereas Stone Martin Builders is the developer of Glenbrook subdivision plat two D, whereas the proposed development is located off of Glenbrook Boulevard, whereas, one, the proposed development is located outside the city limits; two, the sketch plan was approved on November first, two thousand and eleven with contingencies; number three, the final plat for Glenbrook subdivision plat two C was approved on March twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, contingent on lots one twenty-three through one twenty-seven being removed from the final plat. Whereas the required city departments have reviewed and commented on the proposed final plat, now therefore be it resolved that the City Appropriate Planning Commission hereby gives it a favorable review of the submitted final plat of Glenbrook subdivision plat two D. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion by Johnson.
This is a final plat for one lot, lot one twenty-three in Glenbrook subdivision. Truth is, I can't put any kind of positive spin on this, any kind of explanation. The real estate agent was explained to that these lights were not available for sale, for sale, and that was not interpreted correctly and they sold this lot. Now, don't, don't get me wrong, it hasn't changed hands. That would be an illegal subdivision, but there is now a contract on that lot. So I apologize. They, something got mixed up. They have sold this, this lot in theory and they're ready to build a house on it. So that was the, that was the reasoning behind a one-light plat. Thank you for your time and sorry for all the time.